Would you like to call this meeting to order and announce that we had a 6:30 executive session on table and personnel and other sort of stuff? On the roll call? Mrs. Elder, present. Mr. Hauser?
Here.
Mr. Lizer?
Here.
Mrs. Mains?
Here.
Mr. Muller? Mr. Music?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Dr. Resort?
Here.
Dr. Loughlin?
Here.
So let's finish your report.
No report.
All right, now let's sign your reports. We'll be signing the parent students' report. Are you taking any questions? Thank you. Um, we begin with the student report. Lieutenant Charlie.
Good evening. Um, I'll first report on the elementary schools. Kindergarten screenings were held from April 1st to the 8th. PSSA testing for grades 3 through 6 started this week, and I've heard all about it from my little brother, so that was pretty intense apparently. Kindergarten students will participate in Earth Day celebrations at Rotary Field on April 26th facilitated by high school students and Mrs. Logan's science classes. The Pittsburgh Pirates are coming to Mountain View Elementary School for an assembly on April 28th. This assembly is made possible by the Mountain View Elementary School PTO and Chick-fil-A. If you happen to notice, some high school students roamed your halls that day. They found out about this, so were pretty excited. Especially Vince Creers, so keep an eye on him.
In the junior high, scheduling for, schedules for the students were finalized for the 2016-17 school year and turned in on the 8th. Uh, a talent show will be hosted by the Lake Grove Lions Club. Auditions will be held April 13th at 6:00 PM at Lake Grove Elementary School Auditorium. And the show will be held on April 15th at 7:00 PM at Lake Grove Elementary. PSSA testing will be held the next two weeks, and all seventh and eighth graders will be taking the math and English tests. At the senior high, the student council held the senior citizen luncheon. Two hundred senior citizens came to the high school for lunch. On April 6th, student council was happy to wait and provide entertainment for community seniors. Program will be held on May 13th at Nemecole Woodlands Resort. It has a masquerade theme and tickets are $110 per person. And the spring concert will be held Wednesday, April 13th, and the concert and wind ensemble are performing. Concert starts at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, April 13th. That concludes the student report.
Thank you both. Now, I've never missed a appearance as one of the last athletes of all time.
Thank you, Mrs. Mains. Obviously, when I get to recognize athletes at a public school board meeting, that means something pretty cool happens, so that's a good thing. Um, I want to recognize two young men from the school district tonight, and two different sports that have been aware of for significant accomplishments. I will start with my, my first love of wrestling, and I'd like to introduce Luke Fletcher. There you go. Luke's kind of shy, but um, Luke successfully won his third state title this year. Um, that's never happened in Lake Grove for an individual male athlete, and the year he didn't win, he was second. Slacker. He ended his career with 166 wins and only five losses. So, um, a spectacular career, obviously the most decorated wrestler in the history of greater Lake Grove and in a lot of ways Pennsylvania in a lot of categories. A four-time power champion. So, I present to you your three-time state champion, Luke Fletcher. And now you have to understand, as a wrestler, I always thought basketball was what you did to lose weight for wrestling. Well, I've come to learn it, it's actually pretty cool at times too. And we went on a pretty nice ride this year with our boys' basketball team, and of course, with success comes recognition, and it had to be reasonable that successful. And the one young man I would like to recognize tonight off the basketball team is Austin Butler. Austin was voted the Tribute to You Player of the Year, and I don't believe you've ever had a Lake Grove basketball selected for that player. And just yesterday, he was informed he was also selected Second Team All-State Quade Basketball. That's very difficult to, to do, so next year we will expect First Team All-States. But, and incredible job, I mean, most of us saw a lot of the basketball. Um, I think I seen every gem in the WPL thanks to Austin, but um, incredible three-point shot, fearless, shoots it pretty much everywhere, and they go in. So, next year, he's back, he's going to be a junior, which is a good thing, and we look forward to bigger, better things. Um, so I wanted to recognize also tonight, Austin Butler. So Austin, as I used to tell Luke, I'll expect to be here again next year. Meaning you'll have to be off stage.
Luke, what are you doing next year? What are your plans?
Uh, I'm going to go offstage.
Thank you very much, guys, very much. Um, educational programs, talk to your tabbers. Oh, sorry. The report, Mr. Ford.
I'm trying to figure out what I did upset Mrs. Alstott. She sandwiches me between Luke and Austin and the stem. The always exciting and warm reporting session review, and just a reminder to those folks who haven't registered for kindergarten for the 16-17 school year. That opportunity is still available to you, just call 539-4293.
Well, Lake Grove, we always say that our vision and goal is to educate our students in the three As, the arts, the athletics, and the academics. We saw great representation of the athletics this evening, and now we're going to have a presentation pertaining to some of our academics. And we have students from Lake Grove Elementary School and Mrs. Deragon here to present our launch program in the fifth grade. If you reflect back, last month, we had a presentation or the month prior with our launch program at some of the lower grades. So I'm just going to turn it over to Mrs. Deragon, and from what I understand, the students are here to present the same thing they are. And it's great to see so many parents and grandparents and siblings here to support them.
I agree very much. I'm very, I'm especially excited because the last time I was here, I had third graders with me, and I did a lot of the talking. And so tonight, my fifth graders are going to do most of the presentations, which is wonderful. I do want to just give you a really quick overview. Um, in the fifth grade launch project, the new way program, we're in the first module, which is robotics automation. So what the children are learning is not autonomous robotics, but remotely controlled or remotely operated robotics. They spend some time, quite a bit of time on restarts, which you're going to hear their kids tell you about. They also spend some time doing some investigations before they even go a robot. They build this device called a test bed, and Connor, I believe, is going to tell you a little bit more about that. This is where they start learning what they need to understand in order to best operate their robot. And the design problem that they're faced with, it says up here, provides an opportunity for them to apply their robotic skills and knowledge that they spent quite a great deal of time gaining to solve a real-world problem related to an environmental disaster for them. So I'd like to introduce to you our first group. Now, poor Connor, he was so sick, wasn't here the day we took our pictures. But I would like to come up Wyatt, Kelsey, Connor, and Piper. Come on up, they can see you. I want to tell you that, you know, I had some amazing groups to choose from, but I chose this to take you with group because of the way that they worked together. Their collaboration was phenomenal. I would go over, and they looked at me like, "Why aren't you here?" "We don't need you." And they really did it. They just took off on a run, and I did practically nothing for them. I would ask, "Are you okay? Is there anything you need? Tell me what you're doing." They would fill me in and shoot me away, so they could keep working. So Kelsey's going to start us off.
This thing, this is a KWL chart that was done in class with our groups. The K stands for what we already know about robots. The W stands for what we want to know and learn about robots. The L stands for what we learned about robots. We learned our research from the robot set. We learned the definition of robots by reading information and watching videos. We also learned what robots do. They do dull, dirty, and dangerous jobs. Dull jobs are jobs that need to be repeated many times, like screwing these screw-on things 5,000 times a day. Dirty jobs are jobs that humans may not be able to do, like getting through tight spaces, and dangerous jobs are jobs that put humans' lives at risk. Finally, we learned more things robots do like how they sense, think, and act. Robots have sensors that they use to sense their surroundings. Robots have brains like computers and think about what is in the sense. Finally, robots do what the brain tells them to do. The part of the robot that does an action is the motors. So we did a KWL chart to remember what we know about robots, to think about what we want to know, and use the robot set to learn more about robots.
You know what? We're going to adjust the mic a little bit.
Okay. We also used the robot set to research one specific robot. The 3DR hexacopter was the robot we chose to research. It is considered an aerospace robot and also a consumer robot because it's available for us to buy. The popular octopussy making organizer to give facts on the 3DR model. This drone is guided by an autopilot. It can go up to 30 miles per hour in a curious game of physics. The investigations we did with the test bed taught us the basics of robotics and what else there are in the next steps. We got to learn how the batteries work and how the color sensor can monitor its power. We were able to gain each to the controller and figure out the speeds and where it should move. We charted the results of the test and compared it to the rest that happened with all the tests. This taught helped us because we could take what we learned and use it to help us better operate our robots that we were about to build.
Our chat scene was the golden march from the robot. We were only fifth grade group to start and finish in one day. And when the purpose of it made it, they put it together when they come for us. Two people could do two different steps at the same time to be more efficient. It gives you a better look of what you are doing, a wish they would use this app. Once we had built it, we, we were able to practice our driving skills. And then we needed to tackle our design problem, or the asked step in the engine, in the tenement design process. We needed to design a robot to avoid hazardous voyage from an environmental disaster site. For part of the fourth step, we learned about how to make a basic robot charging, and we are to make one. It will now help for our specific design problem though.
In this picture, we were brainstorming our ideas actively, working independently, and view our own separate ideas. In the fourth step, we shared with each other and used a precision matrix to decide which idea to try. We decided to put the two ideas together because Connor and Wyatt's ideas were so similar. Then we added our pieces to the front so that the robot could dial blocks to move them to the collection zone. Finally, we needed to evaluate our design by operating one of the robots throughout the field, through the field, test field. We each got a chance to try it.
Now Wyatt's going to go on the fly here and tell you what they did once they tested their robot, which they're going to show you here in a little bit. What they did then to modify it, and this group was so quick that they were able to go through quite a few different modifications to really refine their design. So go ahead Wyatt. He doesn't have this written down, he's just going to talk to you. Okay, let's move to the other.
Um, our, our first modification to the robot is, was the simple, we connected sides. Two of us needed from going out of the, um, the field. And we put these here to communicate with the other person. We, we made modifications because without them, we couldn't, we couldn't pick, we couldn't move the blocks. The second time we modified, we put the, it's a longer, longer beams on it to, so it's a little bit more volatile. But it was very unstable, it kept wobbling. So, we put a, a, a beam on this side, this side, this, and the same on this side. We didn't walk it.
I'll turn it off, drive it. This is the last part. Can't see you. I'm afraid you're staying. Fine. Hunter and Logan, you can make a break.
Our goal was these.
Joysticks.
Joysticks. These were one of the two motors. And the, the touch按键 in the car, you go, really, you really got buttons. But when touch按键 starts turning red, it can't run because, and, and when the color sensor sees red, it, it shows on the motor and drives the, the color sensor to red.
So while he's driving, the goal, the goal was for them to keep, uh, to get the blocks and move them to the collection zone one while staying on the test field, and two, without dropping anything into the freshwater lake. So that's why the lake is surrounded in red, so that it will stop the robot, hopefully stop the robot before they push anything into it. We have some good operators. And he's just going to collect them all. Those are good. Get them down into the collection zone Wyatt, if that's you. I have no idea why I can't drive a bitch into the road. We did find that the robots don't like the floor. Well, we're going to like the red carpet in the L.E.S. stem lab. All right, Wyatt, good job. All right, so I have one more team to stay with me, and actually, Hunter and Logan are going to come over today to go through the process. Uh, Hunter and Logan were a part of a four-person team. Alexis, Logan, Hunter, and Miss, all the team together. The reason that just the boys are here is because of what they did. The team, the four of them worked together and were able to get everything met within a timeframe, but these two had an idea they were persistent to achieve. So they came to me, not during their stem lab time, because their stem lab, stem lab time is over. So they came to me during an entoural class and during a recess, persistently asking to figure this out. So, uh, Logan and Hunter are going to talk about what they did, so go ahead Logan.
During the brainstorming, our group.
Come on Logan, we're going to get some permanent mic here, put it.
During the brainstorming, our group shared our ideas. My idea was to build a snowplow. I thought of this snowplow because it can push objects, and the problem was of the snowplow. Our first plan was to put a motor on the plow to release the motor. But when we first built this snowplow, we did not have enough time to connect the motor. During the lab session, Hunter was able to figure out how to connect the motor to the plow, to the plow and release the motor. Everyone in our group turned to shine, and we thought I was the best shot. I hope I, I am good at that, because I like to play the job.
Thank you very much.
I would like to talk about how Logan and I were through a lot of questions. One time, Logan and I went in for recess and tried to figure out how to make the plow move up and down by putting a motor on the plow. We had a difficult time getting the plow to move down. Mrs. Deragon explained to us that block plates are the pieces that make things move with the shaft. So we needed to figure out how to put block plates on the plow. We put an axle through the block plates, then we put a washer on both sides of the axle. Then Logan put a rubber shaft, rubber shaft corners on both sides of the axle, so the axle wouldn't fall off of the supporting parts. Then we put a motor on the axle. I decided to put the motor, wire, and cord cord because this cord received input from the buttons on the back of the controller. Finally, we tested it, but it didn't go so well. The motor kept on falling off of the axle every time it would move up, up or down. Part of the reason for that was that all of the joysticks have speed control and none of the buttons do, so the plow would only go up and down at a fast speed. So I wanted to next stage, I'll record and build a box around the motor for you guys. I used four two-by-six beams and a, four-by-two beam and two-by-two beam and six quarter meters. Then I tried it again, and the motor didn't fall off the axle. That is how we remount the chassis.
So Logan's going to power up their robot. He's going to drive it without operating the plow, and then Hunter's going to show you how the plow works. And I'll, go ahead guys, you can get that, you can get that started. While I'm doing that, I have to tell you that I videotaped the first time that Hunter came in and figured out where to put it and how to get that plow moving up and down. And I just wouldn't have been so excited and had a hysterical laugh in the background and would have shared that video with you. But I personally was too embarrassed to let you hear that, but it was really so exciting. I was just so excited. So go ahead, let me show you how it works. Let's drive around, relax a couple of minutes once. Showing his driving skills, much like Wyatt. For a lot of the kids, they're big for a lot, for all the fifth graders, a lot of their, their biggest obstacle was they made the things, the, the beams in the front to be really, really wide or really, really long, and they would push them into the collection zone and tacking up in the first, don't figure, were so hard that they would sway side to side and knock the ball back out of the collection zone. The wonderfulness, thank you Logan, can we let Hunter take over? The wonderfulness about, um, Hunter's ability to raise them lower that plow was that once they have them in there, he can raise that plow back right about there. So didn't have to worry about pushing it out of the way. See, we're going to show you. Now get ready, remember, it only works at fast speeds. Hunter, show them. That's okay Wyatt, just show them how it raises them up. One more time, just for fun. Thank you so much, Peter Riggin, round. Thank you so much. Um, I, I can't tell you how excited, this whole position is just so exciting. Kids are so excited. Right now, I'm in Mountain View, working with the fifth graders there, so their favorite part of the day, don't figure, it's STEM, because you know, what is it this week? PSSA. Right, but they're happy and excited to come anyway, even though they've just been spending their first amount of time on research. But it's still been a lot of fun, so it's going to be really exciting to get them to start building. I did want to share with you real quick, and I will be fast because I know we're taking up a lot of your time. Um, well, first of all, this is on my wall in every stem lab, and honestly, if these six children aren't perfect examples of every word that's on this wall, I don't want to do it. So just one more time, you guys. Get your two behind you there. Uh, Logan, Mrs. Lammer is the librarian at L.E.S., and she and I have been putting our heads together with the help of Mr. Karanka. He was able to get us a classroom set of OSA blocks, which is playing a psychological role, those in your hand are a lot of them. And we did a whole experimental after-school program, six days, with the sixth graders to do an extension from what the fifth graders are doing with remotely operated robots to robots that can be autonomous. These little guys can be both. So you can, um, get them to follow lines, but you can also use them on the iPads. I'm not going to play this because it's taking up all your time. They can code them with different color sequences, and it even leads into, you can see some of those pictures there. There's differences between, I'm not going to teach the whole thing about it as well, I refuse. But, um, once they did all of the fun stuff on the iPads, they actually learned, had been learning with Mrs. Lammer, coding during library time. So they took what they've learned in the library, came to the after-school club, and then used code to program the OSA blocks, loaded it into the little robot, and set it down at their desk, and watched it do everything they just programmed it to do. So really, really fascinating and a lot of fun. And right now, I'm working with, um, the sixth, there are a dozen, almost a dozen sixth graders at Mountain View that are staying with me three days a week, last week and this day, doing the same program. So we just wanted to officially, when we're done, say thank you to Mr. Karanka for enabling us to bring this to the sixth graders as a little bit of an extension. So thank you very much, and is there anything you'd like to add? They got covered it, so thank you. I know we took a little of your time. We are going to need a couple of minutes to clean up our space, but thank you so much.
And just in closing, last month, we presented a course that every seventh grade student will be enrolled next year for a nine-week period, and it's a coding class. So the sixth graders will come with the background that Mrs. Deragon has given us, and be able to continue to expand on that. So again, problem solving, critical thinking, collaboration, and teamwork, all those STEM concepts infused in all our content areas paid well. And great job. Thank you, students, again. Thank you, Mrs. Deragon and Mrs. Lammer. Any questions?
I just have a quick statement. I'm so amazed every time you show up, the children. And I think shortly, when I was in fifth grade, I didn't know what modification, evaluation, collaboration, matrix even meant. And their vocabulary, they're so well-spoken, and you can see how smart they are with what they do. I'm truly, truly amazed. And that makes it hard for me, when you bring that, you know, after all the other bull crap we go through, this will be one you see. This makes it, this makes the pay that we get all more fun. I think I speak for all my, and the staff, and the.
I do want to let you know that on the parent teacher conference evening that happened, that's when these six children came in with their families. And they've gotten the stem lab. And as we got in the STEM lab, we just went over what the presentation would look like. And I said, can you guys figure out which part you wanna do? I left them, once again, I left them alone. They did it themselves. So the vocabulary, you've heard them use, that's all that.
I know. I'm thoroughly impressed, thoroughly thrilled.
Don't worry about it, we'll do it out there. We'll just drag it out.
An agenda item for next week will be to approve a campus physical and occupational therapy contract for the 2015-2017 school year. There is an attachment. And there is a common sense digital citizenship district certification recognition at next week's school meeting. And people are asked to our next fiscal committee meeting date is Tuesday, May the 17th, at 2016 3:00, 30 p.m. in the T L C. Thank you.
Next week, we'll have our agenda with urgent report in one of your roles. And there are attachments from the last year of the Managed Print Service Contract and the Eastern Regional Consortium lease of fiber optic network contracts. But we can't get through all that stuff. Dan's gonna help us with a couple of full presentations, get through the attach.
Thank you, Mrs. Alder. The Managed Print Service Contractors, Mrs. Alder stated there's a detailed attachment for her review, but excuse me, what I try to do is just, we, some of the major points. Can Mrs. Pines please jump in? Because we've worked collaboratively on this over the last couple of months. We'll see from the attachment, we're recommending we're going to receive up business solutions for a $11,998 loan. This is a decrease of what we're currently paying for our Managed Print Services. Currently, we pay $13,796. So we're able to reduce those costs. But the neat thing is, and a thing that I think is worth highlighting, is currently, we have 48 machines throughout the district from seven different manufacturers that are located throughout the six buildings. We have contracts with six different vendors, most of which have different lengths and dates in terms of the district. So understanding all of that, our goal was, when we started this process, we wanted to consolidate these services under one vendor and under one contract. We believe that we were able to get better pricing by bundling all the equipment together and having them located under one contract. We also believe that by reducing the number of machines, so we're proposing to go from 48 machines to 38 machines. We're reducing our costs, we're being able to provide more robust machines throughout the buildings for faculty and students. So we're sort of reducing the number, but we're providing a higher quality of this equipment, up and into utilizing. So that's kind of the down and dirty on that whole process. It's been a lengthy process. We basically narrowed it down to two main vendors. The other vendor, their proposal was $16,359. So to put in perspective, we're currently paying around $13,800. We're recommending going with a contract right around $12,000, which is a savings. And the other option was around $16, a little over $16,000. But we believe to go with the lower price, we're still going, couldn't be able to meet our parting. So that's the proposal for our next week. Is there any questions on that? Can you jump right to the next one? Okay, the next item on the agenda is for the for the Sinesis Consortium lease provider optic network contract. Currently, we participate in Eastern Regional Consortium for purchasing the fiber. We partner with Derry, we partner with Lincoln, we partner with Eastern Hospital Technology Center. We go as a group to try and, you know, lower our cost for the procurement of this purchase. Sinesis is the company that we've worked with for the past five years. We went through a bidding process, and they were once awarded it. They were once again the lowest bidder when we went through this process again. And actually, they held the price exactly at this, so there's no change in that price. So their proposal is exactly the same here for the next five years as it was for the previous five years. The grand total of their proposal is $357,180. Now that's before the 60% E-rate reimbursement that we will receive. And that cost is spread over all the districts and all the sites over a five-year period. So what that means for our school district, our monthly cost will remain the same. It will be $1,218 per month, or $14,612 per year, or $7,300 over a five-year period, again, no change. We have five of the eleven sites, so we're one of the larger schools that participate in that consortium of plow. We received one other proposal. To put it in perspective, the cost that Sinesis gave us was about $5,359 a month. Again, spread across the entire consortium. The other company was between $9,000 and $10,000. So it really wasn't even close, close decision there. They provided us a great service, so that will be our recommendation for next week. And then the finance team means a lot of this is resummarizing that, but there's also a patch.
And I'd like to thank you in all kinds for the work you've done, working on the funding, researching, generally, and share the needs of the district as well as the new budget. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Lammer. So these operations, Mr. Howes.
First off, I'd like to say, Alex, why do I have to do this part? Uh, Chris, thanks, you're welcome. So, Kurt, we're gonna give us kind of your progress part for the other one.
Hi, good evening, thanks. It's been about eight weeks since we last presented to the board a school board retreat. This is actually the first time for public, so at this point, it's a little bit crazy. As far as this building, I kinda hope that you're up here to see me and Hank to speak, but what about the D O A's of the school? As far as where we are, we are possibly in about one-third of the way through the design process. So Hank's been tasked with, of course, designing the new elementary school. And that's about a year, fourteen months, a prime period of design. We went through a programming phase, we kind of discussed areas that we wanted. We did the classrooms, gymnasium, the proper size of the building, capacity. We took some of the schematic design, which is kind of putting some of that work down on papers for adjacencies, size of classrooms in relation to the site as well. So we're kind of in the design development, which we're starting in really quick detail. We kind of go through that engineering process that we saw the kids were doing in some of the architectural sense, researching what works, what has been working for us in used school buildings, 21st century, and also things that we love the district ourselves. So we processed approximately about two or three weeks in design development. From there, it'll be about a couple of months, we'll be kind of designed pencils down, so kind of that testing atmosphere that ran right down to the district. Hank was saying about design, pencils were down, we're done designing. We need to start doing the construction documents, which is the contract language that we have to present to the contractors we bid. And we're looking to go out and bid early next year, kind of capture a good timeframe for the contractors. We're looking to kind of fill their calendars to give us the best price. And from that, we go to construction, which will be about eighteen months, maybe two years. And looking to open for school year 2018, 2019. We're seeing it really far away in some lines, but it will quickly be upon us. And we'll be looking to go to the very side to say that we're moving forward. Up here, activity, a lot of meetings and discussions, most community services operations, and also most of the graders' activities as well. So with that, we'll kind of discuss where we are as far as the cost estimates, the budget, but also the current plans, the site. The good news is, with the budget and the size of the building, through schematic design and all our modifications, we are still within the range that we talked about at the last meeting. We're still in the $125,000 square foot or less range. And we're still looking at a neighborhood student building. So our construction cost estimates, we made the same that $25 million bricks and mortar cost. That's the cost of the construction, and then a total project cost of just under $300,000. Some of the things that we've considered through to this point in our process as far as the site design goals go, we were looking for the location and the property that we purchased. We're looking for, based on proximity of the student location, and community-based, available for recreation, accommodation, and community services, and to accommodate all modes of transportation. In particular, with this building, 50% of the students that attend this building do not ride buses to school. So in looking at all that, we were lucky to find a nice piece of property in downtown Metro that allowed us to meet all of those location goals. The other, one of the other items we looked at in the site design were safety aspects. Separation of traffic flow on and off the site. That's the difference between, we want to try to keep our bus traffic separate from car traffic, and also, if we want to look at the fact we have so many non-bus-riding students, we have walkers and different things happening on the site. And the goal is to allow those to be separate and safe on and off the site. With the walkers, we have, we were talking about curtsies, and the fact that the site is basically entirely sort of blocked. We have electric streets, rain, robbery, which works well. And the last piece of safety was adequate parking for the staff, visitors, drop-off lanes and bus lanes. We're trying to go towards keeping buses and the particular traffic separated as much as possible, but also trying to keep parking off of the streets and on the site. Sustainability portion of it, we also know that this is an elementary building, so we have outdoor, we're gonna need to have some place space. And we have incorporated some outdoor classroom, educational-type spaces to bring some of the things that are taught, getting the classes out, and they can experiment with, and they'll be like what we saw today with the STEM program. And we are also maintaining a green area on the site. The space we found was parked at one point. We are really cognizant of trying not to empty the entire site, building, and hard surface. We need green place space, but we also need things like trees, stakes along the streets and those type of things to consider. We also completed, as you know, the environmental site assessments. Phase one and two typically, which is to replace one, but in this project, we went on and looked at phase two, and we have the report, no contamination permitted if adjacent sites were found. That was done by a third party, but we hired out, we had, so we mentioned. Phase one's breaking the rule, we did prior purchasing of property. Phase two is since they've kind of discovered face-to-face historical records, of course, it's a multi-plan across the street. And also, there was a gas station near Lincoln Street. There's further analysis, and actually, no contamination from either one of the sites affected our property that's going back there. Also, with the site design, the building orientation is very important. And things that we hope have kind of drove our orientation of the building are economical for utilities. We want to make sure that we're close to where utilities are accessible, so that we're not bringing it too far out of the site. But we also are looking at data mining, sun exposure. That does several things, not only does it reduce your electrical cost and that's such a thing, but it also helps with the student learning and helping the environment of the site and building. Studies have shown that daylight really, really helps with the educational process during the day. And what we do further is, we will take full advantage of that daylight by doing things with the controls and the lights in the building, and reduce the amount of artificial light provided depending on how much light in the space is getting. And curb appeal, and people think of city block context. The other thing is, we have this site that is bordered by four of the streets. We want to make sure that we're locating this building properly on that site so that we're not kind of against it, that it's one of the streets or the neighboring buildings, but work well within that site. And when we get to the site plan, we'll do the next slide, we'll talk about some of the things that we've done to deal with daylight and sun exposure. This is the current site plan. As we discussed, we are bordered on four sides by Lincoln, Cedar, and Cherry Streets. The orange spaces are made of two-story classroom wings. And as you can see, they contextually do not align parallel with any of the streets. And if you're wondering why, it was to deal with daylight needs. They are on a true east-west axis on the site, which allows us to provide windows that have a southern exposure and a northern exposure, so that we can take best regional use daylight to our best abilities. We, right now, the contextual piece of the site, we chose Cedar Street as being the front, the main face of the building. We, that is where the main public entrance would be located at this point. We have a secondary entrance that's far off Lincoln Street. And in this area, we're talking about being able to provide bus stacking for all of the buses that would happen during the morning and afternoon, to drop off and pickups. So the buses don't have to stack on the streets. They can enter from Cedar Street, stack along our bus lane, and exit off Cherry Street and go their way. We allow the cars and the parents to be able to enter at the same spot, and they can stack along this stretch of the site and exit on Cedar Street. So we have cars exiting all the way on this corner of the site, and buses exiting all the way on this corner of the site. We located a playground next to the new walking trail that is, has been established. And we have some hard surfaces and play space. Playground and hard play surface adjacent to that. Parking spaces are located along the side. So the spaces, as far as green play and playgrounds, off Cherry Street, which is a dead-end street. So as far as traffic flow, traffic issues being around the students during play, by locating in one part of the site, minimizes that substantial. Having a public space be off of Lincoln Street, again, comes with that city block context. That's probably going to be your public main entrance as far as gymnasium, cafeteria, any sort of evening activity, large, someone who uses doors. And of course, our main entry being off of Cedar Street. Again, pulling cars and particular traffic off of Lincoln, Lincoln Air, the present traffic being in this street. Pulling off those two roads onto Cedar Street allows the safety of our students, which is number one to capture. And also, with the bus line stacking, all the buses that will hit buildings will get to stack up against the sidewalk. So every student will exit the bus onto the sidewalk near this building. So there's no passing parking lots, no passing streets, giving the visitor or the parent drop off the same thing to where we're dropping off at a sidewalk and not crossing a lot of areas again, for the safety of our students. But also, our staff, by having enough staff parking, our staff is also parking on the street, crossing streets, to be able to go to work. So those are some of the big things that we drove as far as the location, you mentioned. Just like the real estate location is everything, location, location. But also, safe. just like the real estate location is everything, location, location, but also safety, but also the sustainability of things to where, we do realize we're typically green, athletic built player. If you miss the building mats, we center within athletics, we're still maintaining a lot of greenery around the site, a lot of tree stake that I mentioned as well. So even though it's a small site, our school building, it's relatively a large school, does fit relatively well, has a nice context between making, maybe as far as the operational things, parking, layout, all sorts of things, we have a real nice site. And to just clarify one of the things Kurt touched on, we basically have two entrances to this building. During the day, during the school day, any visitors coming to the building will be using the main front entrance, and we'll get to that when we see the site later on the floor plans. But during the day, visitors come and go through the main front entrance. In the evenings, when there are events, this entrance plants the cafeteria, the gymnasium, the main entrance, so that works well as a, as an assembly entrance in the evening. That's the larger parking block space, so I think the site goes really well.
Before you switch, just a quick question for Mark. The buses, when the buses are stacked, then we go left out of parking lot?
Whoops.
Yes. And then we get back to work.
They have to make the foot right? The buses, the buses enter the site in this direction, they stack in a straight line along this area, then they turn left onto Cherry Street, and then they either go left or right onto Ligonier Street.
What is that building? Do you recall that building is right in front of the driveway there?
That's the power plant.
Is that a commercial building?
Yes.
And then what's the one, the big dark spot right there?
This, this was the old, the old mill that...
That's the old mill, correct. And then, when, you know, I see you, we're able to squeeze the building pretty far away from the street, which is a good thing, but the textures, the textures on the building, what are we talking about, masonry or...?
Right, we're talking about using traditional materials, but...
And we'll get to that slide there, you're jumping again.
Just worried about proximity to the, to the, our other property. Yes, we're talking about using traditional materials, but keeping in mind that it is an elementary building and needs to relay the feeling of an elementary school. All right, the building design goals, we talked about the common in public spaces and the location of where those would be off the main, the main, for lack of a better term, corridors, but the building on corridors at this point. The gymnasium is scheduled to seat five hundred students. Cafeteria is adjacent to the stage and will serve as a multi-use space for productions also. The corridors, where I wanted to get to, we've really have gone away from the concept of corridors. We obviously need the circulation space to get from area to area, but as you'll see in the plan, the corridors have widened and turned into some of the things that have taken place here at the high schools, some gallery space, and then when we get into the classroom wings, they've turned into, to, what's the term? Extended learning areas, that's what that, you know, that's what that's going to be. So as far as the large public area, you know, rest of the need to have a large gymnasium, so eighty-four floor, eighty-four floor, so it's your high school, ten-four. Ceiling for five hundred, and building for three hundred students on the floor in shares, so you can have a whole assembly within your gymnasium, of course, to accomplish that building. Large cafeteria is large enough to have free lunch periods still, but also be large enough to, so you can have a full stage as well, because we won't have a lot of touring in this school, but have a full stage though, that cafeteria is large enough to accommodate a nice set of used for performance space. So we're typically in a smaller elementary type school, where you would see a cafeteria, a gymnasium back to back over the dividing wall to kind of create that large space. Who wouldn't have decided to make cafeteria space large enough to accommodate these sort of performance for one, sit down at the L E S? You had to mention on the corridors, where taking away that square footage, which should be a passway for students coming from point A to point B, but attaching that square footage into a wow after, a gallery type space, throughout our main kind of corridors and interactions between public space and private space, the academic wings, but also being open and transparent, that allows for passive security. So supervision of students, they're all being closed, always one turn, nice wide open, so supervision of students beyond just traditional cameras and, we'll have cameras still, but that passive security which allows each of the staff and we provide the students to break through. And we've also located some of the encore spaces and some of the common spaces in off of those galleries with glass and able to, so that when you're, when students are passing by, say the art room, they're, the entire art room will now serve as a display area, because the students are passing through this daily and they can see the things that are happening in the art room. Same thing with the science STEM areas and the media center upstairs and those type of things. They're located off of these gallery spaces and are almost an extension of those gallery spaces.
One, I just want to go back one more time, this is more question from Mark. Has the transportation folks took a look at the site yet?
Not yet.
I'm not, I'm just worried about the buses right now, and maybe, maybe block them before you get too far, and we have to force around that turny or something there, maybe you should run a bypass.
And we will, we'll get in touch with the transportation.
I think one of the things that we were, we have to look at the L E S now, it's a nightmare.
Yeah.
It truly is. And so there was a lot of attention paid to that, and a lot of consideration given to how it's going to measure traffic. With police department where they are now, this would be a blessing this time. It's just a, the one now is like...
Some things to think of, Cherry Street, although it is basically a dead-end street that does not connect onto Lincoln, it is a two-way wide street. It's a full width of two legs of traffic, and we have plenty of room to allow for large turning areas in and out of the site for the buses, so. And the fact that the buses can all stack on, on the property, and the fact that Cherry Street is a dead-end street, there won't be, there won't be waiting for cars to come out of the traffic, and they can, they can easily make their turns out and wait on campus as they're, as they're making that turn out. So we will go over that with the bus, bus and company.
That's my only worry, because then they start, you know, that aggravation. We solved one big problem, now we have two little ones, because it's a bitch going somewhere. That's all I'm worried about. It's more, you know, how they're swinging.
Ligonier Street two-way or one-way?
Two-way.
Two-way.
All the streets.
All the, all the streets are two-way.
Yeah.
Well, I mean Cherry is two-way, it's just a dead-end.
Yeah.
Which at the time when we looked at Cherry, we were wondering if that dead-end piece would be an issue or not, and as we worked on the plan to design the site, it turned out to be a little less. We've talked a little bit about the encore spaces and the academic course spaces, we talked about that on the site plan a little bit, they are, they are off on those, those two wings, centrally located right off of that main gallery space, and the same concept with the corridors, we talked about the extended learning areas, the corridors now have become wider and less like a corridor feeling, and have really become a gathering space and the ability to foster collaboration and flexibility in a, in a space outside of the classrooms. The classrooms are clustered in great configurations now, and so an entire grade level could need out in these T L As if necessary to foster collaborations. And then we get to the aesthetic design goals, which Mr. Palmer had asked about. And the idea there is we're trying to, we want to try and reflect the tradition and history of the area, but do it in a modern and colorful and inspiring and exciting type of way, keeping in mind that it is an elementary building. It can't be formal and stuffy, but we want to use time-tested materials and deal with the contextual fabric of the area that the building is located in. So that's the, that's the plan with that, and we're excited, we'll work, that's the point of interest that we're working on now, and at our next presentation, I think that may be one of the main things we focus, focus on at that point, the look of the building will be, will be showing you what that building is going to be.
My issue is, it's not a suburban school like we're sitting here, we're often alone in our town. You know, it's, you know, the neighborhood, you've got folks, you've got trails, you've got all sorts of stuff, that it, you know, just, I'm worried, not worried, I know you do a good job, I'm not worried about that, but I'm just worried about plopping this thing down like a suburban school inside our town, you know?
That's exactly right.
As a city, like that.
I have the exact same concerns, and we've discussed that in depth, that this, this can't be a rural or suburban looking school plopped down in the middle of a city block.
Right.
It's got to, it's got to relate to and fit with the contextual surroundings of that, but still stay elementary building.
Exactly.
We don't, we don't want it to look like a high school city block building for it.
No, it's, it's great, it's phenomenal, but also the contemporary theme of being a large space of blazing and glass, with that daylight aspect, bringing the natural lighting into the space, the core space in the classroom, so that makes it a little less heavy as far as the mass, you know, recognizing to what we are within a city block and whatever, it's had to see context, no representation of that stuff, so it's a drudgery act.
It's, like we said, it's a two-story building, and the main floor would be, would consist of classroom wings in orange, the spaces in red are things like a center of student creativity store, which what we had here, and administration area, and they both flank that, that front entrance that we talked about where the public would enter during the day, visitors coming to the building, to enter this side. Then we have the gymnasium, the full-size gymnasium, and cafeteria, and stage off of that, and they flank where the large, where the large parking lot was, and the bus would be entrance here for equal use. The gray spaces are the circulation gallery spaces we're talking about. We have the fine arts area back here shaded in yellow, and how it consists of things like music and art and a band room, and those types of, types of things on the first floor. Yes?
What's the, the amount of space between the classroom wings? That, yeah, right in here?
Right here, we were careful about that, making sure that we did allow enough space in there. We have about thirty-five feet right now, we want to try and keep it these thirty feet apart. They're, they're only two-story wings.
I'm concerned about the shadow and the sun.
Right.
Thirty feet is a minimum with the height of two-story buildings, we wouldn't go any further than that, but thirty feet, it's been, it's trying to show up thirty feet, so we get that daylight.
And that thirty feet, with the way, with the way the floor plans are laid out, the jetting in and out for, because of these extended learning spaces, the space, the space that's, that's closest that I told you about only goes from this corner to this corner. It extends out here and it extends out back into here, so we, I think we've looked at that and been sympathetic and kept that in our, in our mind, that we don't want these spaces to be too close together and create another one with shadow effect.
You have to keep your eye on the compass.
And as far as operations sense, as you move left or right across the sheet, you have to, the left is more public space, so the assembly use and gymnasium we have here. As you move to the center of the building, that becomes your encore spaces, so those are the special events, community type events, it just quickly glimpses into the arts, the STEM activities we saw tonight, that's going to be on the second floor, just to make that visual, that main kind of gallery space. Then over to the right is more private space, fashionable streets, with these extended learning, we're going to close those off to certain events, security issues, but also due to just the nature of gallery spaces and the arts and the STEM and the activities involved, we still have the ability to have a kind of more required academic setting in this fashionable street, so that was kind of the main focus of our plan, is to have public kind of transition to the private, the middle part of the street. And again, as related to the site, Ligonier being kind of public side, Lincoln, fashionable streets right to the way they are, they don't get that noise, that, 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 from the traffic, from the site, so those are the kind of things we put there, separating spaces from the other.
Space in the other second story classroom areas, the circulation gallery space gets to be much smaller on the second level, because we're only trying to give them the space of this space. We have the science and technology off of that gallery space, and the same types of things where we talked about allowing glass to come into this space, and possibly even having glass along the exterior wall here that brings natural lighting through here and also into these interior spaces. We are, we have, the idea is, some of this, this space on the lower level ends up being your large gallery space with, it's a two-story feel to it, it's next to volume and feel to the space, and then this would be almost a balcony that overlooks it in a small piece along this area, but then goes into the gallery areas. And as you can see, the way this, these corridors, I'll call them, are located, it allows for some extra gathering space to happen in these spaces, and the same with the extended learning areas. Come down the classroom wings, you can see corridor steps out in several levels to a larger space right in the center, so classes can come out into this space and utilize this circulation corridor space for educational means.
This is really to give our staff the most flexibility, how to educate the students to kind of, obviously fit, you know, peer-to-peer, teacher, correct, one-on-one, we do have some small spaces, we do one-on-one, we do group segments within those extended learning areas, but also all that science and technology, pulling some of those projects out of that space, get to see kind of some of the things we saw tonight, and we did quite mention that the media center would be that kind of blue box, with a blue box as well. And I have a concern just as far as I'll be on the second floor, and speaking with Ms. Ray, that's L E S now, she's actually thrilled, seeing her amazing social media center next to STEM, next to the class for that, maybe we had a collaboration that we saw tonight, and then for larger scales in that space, so I think it would be centralized, the muscles go across the every day, it's a really nice future for the building.
Well, in the extended learning spaces, if there was anything at all, what about the open concept learning, that, that I know we're thrilled so heavily? This allows you to utilize a method, but not put you in a box with only those.
Speaking as a product of that open classroom concept, I agree, this is the one, this is the one thing that, that, that did well, and we're incorporating that into this plan.
Basically, the end of this question. I think it's very thoughtful, I have to do, I think it's going to be cool set, but the flow that, just as you described, makes a big difference, I think. It's hard for, for a lot of us to appreciate what that means, but I understand what that means, that way it flows and everything with galleries, I think it's going to, it'll feel right, you know what I mean? Feel like it belongs to us.
I will tell you on that extended learning thing, it's not an opportunity to see it firsthand if it is a learning, and it's a shame how the kids are so distracted because right now, because it's so, people moving around them. But this gives them the opportunity to utilize that, and they don't have that problem, and can actually go and study. It's kind of an observation, but you could not with existing growth and see a difference, and what's a difference, they'll do.
I agree. That whole thing with Kurt was saying, when you can do that kind of thing, when you can go back to board for large rooms and all that, I think that, that enhances the experience of those children, especially at that age, is that the lesson.
And as Kurt had said, the trial and error portion, the pieces that they, that the students talked about today, we went through that same process. The plans we're showing tonight don't look anything like the first set plan that we started with them. And it was, it was a matter of refining and talking and finding out what works and what doesn't work, and it's, it's, it's been a lot of work to get to this point, but it was well worth it, because we think we've got a good basis to work on.
And in no way this is the end point either, we still, we can design, we have to save the design patterns down, we can push it forward, we can just refine, and work on a very great building.
Thank you.
Uh, also for the agenda, oh, let me say, thank you. Yes. Anyway, uh, like, also for the agenda, uh, those, uh, we'll provide that processing, audio videos, which are particular for our science supplies, athletics, uh, like, also, uh, on the agenda is the, uh, equipment for installation, for the cameras, the factory in the bottom view. And also, oh, the, the, uh, facilities and operations plan, three meetings from March 10th are attached. And, uh, for April 7th, there's also that, that, that.
Yeah, I did add an attachment, an attachment that I'd like everyone to get a look at. Um, the National Council of School Facilities and the Center for Great Schools did a very thorough analysis of the state of our K-12 infrastructure, foundation and at the state level and a lot of funding that's going into as well. As we basically identified, there's a forty-six billion dollar spending gap between what our infrastructure needs and what is actually the funding that's there. So a lot of good information, I just wanted to share it, there's a lot of good things as far as what twenty-first century margin of margins are, what we should be providing to our district, what we should be doing to our students. Also, I also wanted to tell them to commend or to make a decision made, building a new building, this is a great opportunity to do something for this country, so it's a lot of good information in there and I just wanted to share it.
Uh, next up, meeting is, uh, facilities and operations meeting will be Thursday, March 5th, three thirty P M.
Thank you, Mr. Houser. Next week we will have a party presentation, uh, several passion with student council members. Also on agenda will be the third boys' basketball trip to Disney and the senior nights race list in with an extra game track next Wednesday. Spring recognition night will be Wednesday, May 5th, there are, uh, four, we have a flyer for, can you relation stretch report?
There's a note here about the next, the program that the third parks integration may, Thursday, the twenty-first. What period is the precedence for that? I just got one found with the main, why, what are you pushing to add this catalog?
Hey, Miss Morgan, Mrs. Mann, yes, thank you. Um, on the agenda next week is a word of the paper bid through the, through the W I U consortium, and there is an attach with that. And the summary of the W I U board meeting of March twenty-second, or a patch. And the next, uh, western, uh, media, maybe, will be Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, which that's thirty P M of the W I U. Thank you, Mrs. Mann, and the C T C, is there music?
Thank you. Uh, the agenda night, uh, early in agenda, I have a group, the W C T C, we, uh, sixteen twenty-seventh operating person in the board, I'm sure, and, and, um, as an attachment, just the W C T C general operating for the meeting minutes are March twenty-third and the next meeting will be, um, April twenty-seventh, uh, seventeen one.
Mr. Mason, is there anything more, officer?
I just have one more question, I'm looking at board number seven, so that, yeah, just very briefly, can you touch a little more last year where we were on issue?
With the, uh, C T C budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, we are looking at, uh, it's calling for a five-point groups, uh, three-six percent increase. Whatever the dollars, cents wise, it's going up about fifty-six thousand dollars. Um, overall, now that spread between there and this, right in here, our major costs are around fifty-one thousand dollars. Um, but what I can tell you is they're experiencing the same, kind of many other schools are experiencing seventy-five percent of the increase is, um, narrowed, break down to wage increases and, and, so, a lot of their costs, um, you know, those, those sort of fixed costs that contracts and the fees require, but what is causing that, that, um, five-point three-six percent increase? It originally started higher, um, and they've worked out, doing, uh, nice film of work of the, the administration over there to bring that down quite a bit, uh, to that five-point three-six percent, but I know it's from the administration, of course, it's clear.
Thank you. Uh, there will be, um, five policy on the agenda next week for final adoption. Uh, there, I'd like you to take a look at the policy number eight twenty-three, then the laxum policy. It was, nothing has changed about it, but somehow one of them's been printed, it's God's regard, the wording did. Because everything is as you saw them, um, last month for a first read. And I'd like to tell you that the policy committee didn't meet regarding the one policy that was questioned by the member of the audience. And basically we decided, um, that next month will present you that whole policy with all of the wording that was suggested by P S B A, although some of us are not totally in favor of that thing. But it, it amounts to a whole bit of behaviors that are incorrect. And I always approach that kind of well as a gun on the list, it must be okay. But this was pretty exhaustive and maybe we're going to say, that somebody will say, oh, wait, they couldn't possibly have any problem with what I'm doing about this, but it's there and clearly that will indicate that there could be a problem with that kind of behavior. So that's all going to be there for your, um, usual next month. And then, uh, we have some clearer now of another major policy and some guidelines also to present to you next month. But next week, these five will be on the agenda for adoption.
Thank you, so, technologies, Mr. Palmer?
I'm not saying something, I'm gonna lock them. I think the biggest mistake we made is digesting people and there's a whole list of signs, you've got to look for. Basically in the M S, if they find somebody unresponsive and not acting correctly, they check the blood sugar and give them a lock, they give them a scan. There's no worrying about anything else, there's altered mental status, they get narkane and they get the blood sugar. So I'm not sure what the purpose of listing all these symptoms are, I guess. Except to say, well, you didn't do this once, somebody laying on the floor, there's not responding, and they get, they get narkane. Basically, what should be. So I don't know if this is something that you have trained everybody for, to recognize all these things, or you just say, um, well, if somebody's laying on the floor and not acting right, yeah, but there, it's working and that, but you're not gonna have.
Um, we have to have, we had the, the policy viewed by the D N S director, John, uh, Dr. Phil Johnson.
Phil Jenkins.
Jenkins, that right.
I understand that, and I, I know you, there's a whole.
And there will be training for all the staff.
I'm just saying, we don't want to be, make the people do physical exams and diagnostic, but, you know, basically they're unresponsive or not, they're unresponsive, you give them a lock. I don't know if we should change it or not, I mean, I don't know how, what that means, I don't know if this is, if somebody doesn't have good skin or not, they're giving a scan.
I think that, um, the, the first aid survey, the scene, make sure, you want to make sure they have breathing and because narkane doesn't do any good if there's no pulse, so that was what I was.
Well, that's, that's basic, to be honest, we've got possibly laying on the floor, there's a difference between altered mental status and death. So, basically, people with, who respond to narkane sometimes are dead. They squirt their nose and they revive and they come back to life, so, I mean, in my opinion, you find somebody laying on the floor, they get narkane, you can have to worry about it sometimes. How long does that take? Obviously, someone's gonna be doing.
You have to go get it and then.
Receive the R stuff before it gets there, and it's really disastrous.
Well, I guess that's what means stressed and training, is we need to sign, don't, don't jiggle around and try and figure out whether it is or isn't, just give it.
You're not gonna hurt anybody.
Thanks, Dr. Allen. Uh, next week will be approved of the renewal by my name is, by my standing with C C L, he's been a provider, he's done a great job. Uh, technology services for three years and the Pennsys School Information System Administration for like here. Also improving the, uh, school men's software program, I think should be discussing technology. And the technology meeting, uh, next one is May tenth, two thousand sixteen, and your meeting is for that.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer, and superintendent's recommendation.
Uh, next week we'll ask the board to approve re-remuneration, Karen Held as the classroom assistant, Hayley Majorsky as the custodian, and Gail Ralphs, who is the secretary of administration receptionist and with employee benefits or, excuse me, handled employee benefits. In addition, uh, we will ask the board to approve, um, the list of substitute teachers that upon when it be processed, there are six, um, of them there. In addition, uh, to support, to approve, excuse me, the support personnel appointment of Tammy Smith as the administration receptionist, uh, as well for employee benefits, uh, which Gail Ralphs vacated. In addition, um, Diane Adams, a substitute assistant, head substitute personal assistant, as well as student summer workers. Uh, I think for the last three or four years, the district has been hiring student summer workers to assist, um, with cleaning um, and basic, um, maintain, maintenance types of jobs, Michael Hollings, Samuel Conther, Sarah Schrempf, if I said that right, and Jacob White.
Did I say that last name?
Yeah.
Kit Brian, something, something, something.
Um, as well as to approve a support personnel appointment of Patrick Townsend as weight training assistant supervisor. This is retroactive, March first, um, after Eric Berkeley had to resign from his position because of taking another, um, another job, um, extracurricular job. Um, as well as to approve Barbara Plimchak, she is a teacher at Mountain Hill Elementary School for Baptist league during sixteen-seventy school year, uh, for professional development. Um, the other business notes are there, Breakfast of Champions this Wednesday is our senior high school concert band wind ensemble, percussion ensemble, um, at seven o'clock here in the senior high school. Our art show, the junior and senior high school art show, which is in this facility right here, will be the twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth. And I think the reception, yes, is April twenty-eighth, Thursday night, three P M here. Um, the grand march, if you are interested in attending, um, where the students head off to Nemco is in the senior high school auditorium, being a little earlier this year at four P M, uh, to accommodate the travel. As well as the senior high chorus ensemble, concert chambers, and the limits choir, uh, will be Thursday, May nineteenth. Again, here in senior high school auditorium. We have a Lego award meeting next Tuesday here in the C S C at seven thirty, um, P M. And then we have two meetings in May, and it will be May tenth and May seventh here.